Good morning. For the record, there's a copy of those meetings I called the hall right there. The West Wall. Would that would go around the room for the record. Uh, Chris Rogers, Ken Boo.
Janaye Pankook, Operation Youth Success.
Mark Flure, Douglas County Youth Center.
Brad Alexander, Douglas County Youth Center.
Patrick Blimmingdale, County Administrator.
Kim Bolo, Douglas County Clerk.
Pam Murphy, County Administration.
Charlie Salter, JDI Coordinator.
Well, we presented last Tuesday to the county board, so not a whole lot new since then. We did get the August numbers in this morning. So we averaged seventy-three was our average daily population for the month of August. Admissions were only sixty admissions during that month. So that brings us to an average daily population for calendar year twenty nineteen at seventy-nine point five. Average length of stay is twenty-eight point five, and we're on track to admit somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred and forty-four kids. And I, you want me to go through kind of what uh, what I did on Tuesday, Chris?
You'll pull out some stuff you may not agree.
Well, there was a meeting. I wasn't able to participate in the call on Friday about the Creighton UNMC, Charles Drew. I know Chris was on the call, Mark was on the call, so maybe you just want to give an update on that?
Sure. We're, uh, we've been in conversations with Charles Drew about providing additional services and being at the youth center. And we're following up to hopefully get some closure on those contracts with both Charles Drew and Creighton psychiatric services. The piece, uh, we still need to hear back from Creighton University as far as the rate that they're, they're looking to charge. But we're hoping to have drafts to look be reviewed over the next week to a few days.
So I just sent an email to Teresa, Kristen, both y'all, three of y'all, just saying, you know, what's, what's needed to move there. Let me know so we can go see what goes from there. But are you waiting feedback from Creighton or are you waiting feedback from CHI?
I, well, I've reached out to both. Um, so I, I would presume it would be CHI because they'll be the one that's directly responsible for the, the rate. But we, we reached out to them and said that we're looking to duplicate the contract with a similar rate that we have with the UNMC.
Nothing new other than that.
And just to mention, of course, the reimagining juvenile justice, that rolls out September eighteenth and nineteenth. And so far we-
It's going to consist of?
Uh, it's going to consist of, we reached out to sixteen different system points and as well as community providers to give them an opportunity to reimagine, reimagine juvenile justice from their vantage point. And it's from the train to trainer from school and main institute. And the cornerstone of, of the training is to give, make sure that youth are having a positive youth development model that's attached to their time in the system and giving youth an opportunity to ask questions and to be involved of how they're being moved through the system. And Carla Dish and I will be doing the training. We handed out some of this informational at the board meeting. And really looking forward to the training. It really will give us a chance to ask, what can we do differently? What can we do better to help young people navigate through the system and how it could benefit families as well?
All right. Thanks. Sean?
I gave a rather lengthy update of the last meeting and as you know, we run our members quarterly, so I do not have an update today, just to feel any questions might have.
Were you all at almost there?
Uh, the studies that I mentioned last time, there are two in process and one that's about to begin, so nothing to present at this time.
What's about to begin yet?
The one with Dr. Spahn.
Have you all had a date yet on the OPS thing?
Uh, I'm not sure about the OPS, uh, the SSI meeting.
Is that what you're here?
Uh, we do not, I don't have a date yet when they're doing that. I think they said they have them come in for training maybe in October. Kathy said she'll get back to me.
Uh, that, that's when all you, they will come in like that location like they do?
Right. Yeah, I think it's kind of late. I'm not sure.
All right. Um, nothing else? What about the, um, two weeks? Any truancy concern that's taken on you all right now?
Uh, the truancy concerns are, um-
I guess any numbers you're seeing that's triggering things, trying to gauge. I know they got to strive for ninety-five things, so hopefully that kicks in for some day.
Well, you know, we're hopeful that this year we see fewer. We did not see fewer last year. And our two truancy specialists have doubled their caseload this year going into the school year. So they each have over one hundred meetings to schedule. There are all those truancies that came in in May and June, late, late April, May and June.
So when you say going in the school year, they, they're picking up-
Right.
Stuff from the last year.
Right. So when those truancies come in at the end of the school year, we don't meet with those kids until the beginning of the next school year.
Uh-huh.
Because we meet with them in school with their school team.
So you have hundreds to close out?
We have two hundred, so each of our specialists will be meeting, are scheduling meetings with that many this year.
So since it had that summer gap, what does, what does close out consist of?
It's, it, it's, they're beginning the process of truancy diversion. So they, they can't be on diversion in the summer because there's no school.
I know. So I'm just saying, so you had that is three months, but what's the, really what's the rationale for that after three months?
Um, I, I, I'm not following your question.
So they, they had, all this happened last year, and because school let out-
Right.
Nothing happened, so now you're picking it back up?
Right.
So with that concept of, I guess, you know, immediate sanction, what does three months' gap do? What's justification of a three months' gap?
So, um, truancy is much different than a delinquency, regardless of sanctions, I, I guess, to use that word. A truancy takes place over a whole year and sometimes multiple years. So these kids have gathered forty, fifty, sixty truancy days by the time that truancy is written. And so an immediate meeting is not really the highest priority. The highest priority is getting the whole team together with that youth. So if we just meet with the youth on their own, that's not as an effective intervention as when we're meeting with the school team.
Well, no, no, I'm not going to say on their own. So basically, the, I'm assuming the team, because this kid had that level last year, the team is meeting now to make sure the kid doesn't start off this year the same way.
Correct. And many of those kids are moving sort of buildings or levels, so moving from eighth grade to ninth grade, that kind of thing.
And to clarify, you didn't get the referral till after school was over, is that what you-
Or at the end of the year where-
So it's not like you had the kids, you're waiting three months. These are new referrals.
So, and, no, and I'm just trying to justify the logic because it's been a three months, so the logic is this kid has a record of attendance issues, even if the summer's been there because they've had this record. You get there again and then try to prevent the, the year from going on to a bad start. That's the justification?
Really? Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anybody else concerned, questions? All right. Uh, Cheryl?
All right. Well, I have a lot. I'm not going to go over all this that I wanted to bring all of this because I haven't been here for a while. So first, thank you to OYS and Sherwood. We finally have really good printout of what a Douglas County Juvenile Justice System, System Map looks like. The value to this map, it seems to some people real silly and kind of a kindergarten thing to do. But the value now is for all of our reform initiatives to be able to see at what points in the system a decision is being made by a youth that we could then collect data at that point to find out, do we average all that disparities that are occurring there? What is happening? Do we need to beef up services, whatever it is? So we're real excited to have this, so a copy for everyone. It's just a map of the Douglas County Juvenile Justice System and points that we'll hope to be looking at in the next year or so. Um, I've attached for you, we had our statewide JDAI collaborative last Wednesday.
Can I ask a question before we make a statement? Uh, we, we've met with law enforcement and Luther Family Services regarding crisis response teams and making sure that they're getting more activation in both the northeast and southeast precinct. And actually, where we have law enforcement contact, where we have the sudden release detained, taken into police custody, we're, we're anticipating that there also be a line for crisis response teams at point of law enforcement contact. And law enforcement, they're, they're looking to make that addition to their policy. And we're, we're hoping to hear something more definitively from Chief Smarter as we get closer to, for them expanding. Law enforcement is expanding. They have what they call co-responders that they use for the police department. Luther Family Services is, is expanding, and they're going to be hiring someone that can assist directly in the Oklahoma Hall and Southeast Precinct as well.
Yeah, I can inform the case processing group. That's actually a prevention strategy and what happened before this map happens. So, um, we could certainly talk to them if they're considering branching the map out into prevention.
Yeah, it's actually at the point of contact for law-
It's not the point of intake though, and it's, so it would actually be a prevention strategy to the law enforcement contact. So I can bring it to that committee and they can review it and decide if they want to add prevention to the case map.
What do they need?
Uh, we just met last Monday, so about four weeks from last Monday.
Thank you.
Uh, so we had our statewide meeting last Wednesday. We worked on our five-year strategic plan. This is just an update of what each of the working groups are doing right now, so I'm not going to go over this for you except to tell you that our objective admissions subcommittee is back together. It's been on hold for about four years. This is Mary Bisick. She's the chief of probation. Kathy Bel Castro, who is a captain with the Omaha Police Department. Deb Ty Dolan, who is the county attorney, myself, and then our JDI data person. And what we're doing is looking at kids detained. We're looking at kids who don't score for detention. Kids who are pre-adjudicated are already on probation. We're staffing those cases together and then able to inform within our own agencies, things that we saw that could be done differently. Kids that we can identify that might have been better served under a prevention strategy. So we're hoping the work from that group will be used to inform our eleven o'clock calls that we have regarding youth who are detained to give an idea of what conversations we should be having on those calls. And then our case processing committee is starting a new expediting process with the DCYC expediter and an expediter in the public defender's office to take the information from the eleven o'clock call and start a file between all of the people working with the youth of who is in charge of what, what things we know about the youth's trauma, about their ecology, that we might be able to send home with services for them and their families sooner than we are. Attached also here is our second quarter data memo showing kids that have come into detention and kids that have run out in that quarter. The average daily population during that time was fifty-seven point three.
Are there more handouts?
Pardon me? Yeah.
Here, you can have my, um-
Fifty-seven point three being the population of juveniles in the youth center. It does not include youths that are on adult charges. So that is attached. And then also attached is our quarterly alternatives to detention memo. This is fairly new. The committee worked on it for about a year. Just looking at cases, looking at overrides, trying to find a way to group all these kids in a way that can inform. And so now we know that we have alternatives to detention according to the Casey definition. An alternative would not be successful if the youth failed to appear to a court hearing or if they obtained a new charge. Now, what we know is that those are the reasons the Casey Foundation would say an alternative has failed, but we know kids leave alternatives for other reasons. And so we're going to start tracking these on this, so maybe we can work with some providers about additional training surrounding family engagement, sanctions, things like that, other services they can put in a, in a home instead of detaining youth. And so that's what I brought today, if anyone has any questions.
So, what are you, um, seventeen, what did you just say?
Uh, I don't have it on me.
Because if there's, I'm going to put that on, uh, with the data memo on there.
Kind of word?
Yeah.
Okay. I will let them know if I can, but I'm pretty sure that's not my cap.
So what dates are the, are, is the, um, miss, the objective missions, what, what are they going to set up? Have they settled into a set time range?
You know what? They don't have a set time. We all arranged for one, and I know they've scheduled another one for September twentieth. I will not be here for that, and there is one set for October, but I can find out if they're going to give a same date, same time.
Okay. All right.
Is there anything, um, and, and, I'm not quite sure if I recall correctly. Is there, is there a screening or anything that kind of rates alternatives to detention? As far as, is there any type of success leader or any type of grading tool that can determine if alternative, how, how, what they're doing?
Well, that's kind of the purpose of, of the Alternatives Committee, creating this memo, so that we can look and see what success rates of alternatives are. So we hopefully in twenty twenty can start making some recommendations about alternatives that we have that we think can use some assistance.
Very good.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Chris. So Operation Youth Success, as Mark alluded to, is co-sponsoring, co-hosting, co-facilitating the training for reimagining juvenile justice. That's really exciting again with the diversity of the stakeholders that are committed to participate. It's quite an endeavor with six trainings for, I think, six hours per training.
Correct.
And so, as you can tell, that people are committed to reimagining juvenile justice and reform efforts. So that's exciting to be a part of. OYS continues to spearhead SOJI and Restorative Justice, Restorative Practices Task Forces. We'll be meeting actually Restorative Justice here this afternoon and then SOJI on the ninth and the sixteenth of this month. Uh, we hope to bring some potential draft best practices and policy for SOJI and definitions to the October OYS Steering Committee meeting. We'll see how that all comes together in the next couple of meetings. Our work group updates are all on our website, along with the map finally is up there. It took the web developer a little bit to figure out how to get that to populate correctly and transition in that format, but that's been accomplished, so you can find that if you ever need to refer someone to that or make your own copies for any reason. And, um, the other piece is Tara Luna's final evaluation report of Operation Youth Success was reviewed by the Steering Committee last month, the middle of August, with some opportunities to move reform efforts forward. And we will continue to delve deeper and glean opportunities off of that report. And that is also available on our website, or I can send it out if anybody would like, like a hard copy. Any questions?
No, let me state, so Mark, to your point, I think you've, you've probably had a conversation with Luther and asked them, and I don't, I still don't know the official name of what OPS calls this, but this preventative session that they have with that. I think, you know, you might want to talk to them about that to some degree, or I don't know if it's a conversation in respects to the SROs, because being that only the police or certain people can trigger it, uh, that might be a bigger conversation. But I, I, I say that because there is a conversation that I've been having with the superintendent and Lisa Utterback. So they're on the ninth, Carla, Janaye, myself, Lisa, and the superintendents are going to meet to kind of, to continue this discussion that we've been having about the, um, kind of OPS, I mean, OYS's place upfront in preventative ground. And so I guess this, this conversation is going to be initial part in trying to map out some things that the superintendents talk about in respects to the core jurisdictions that we have. Kind of, you know, they're supposed to be about education, but they're having to dip into all this other stuff. So it's going to kind of be this thing where you all are going to kind of map out some territories and kind of help do the legwork on that with Lisa to kind of see what the gaps are to get up front.
Well, transition rooms, it certainly falls into that category.
Well, what you, what you mean transition?
Well, uh, there, there was a period of time where each of the schools had a room where students could go and as far as transitioning out or in of, of-
Well, that's another, that's another deal. I don't think it's going to be us. I think the, the heart of the conversation is going to be, I think if, uh, and we'll get a feel for how that goes and kind of get some report out of it. But I think the, the near, the dealers kind of initiate, kind of find out where is it that they are spending time and stuff that they don't kind of move to. And this is a bigger piece of the, the program in answer, because, uh, if they, if this drive for ninety-five thing goes like they should and they have this, this meeting to identify the services, the hopeful piece is that, you know, we collaborate to try to provide or work through some of this stuff upfront that may be needed for the many kids and families. Where they work their way up to you. Uh, this is for, this is not just truancy. This is like, at some point-
Should be expulsions too, really.
Lisa and I met last week and actually started these conversations about how OYS can support the work of reentry. We, we talked about that. We talked about truancy. We actually talked about restorative practices within schools, um, utilization of like Concorde Center, et cetera. Um, and then we talked about the whole piece of supporting with service, not us providing service, but connecting to services that may be individualized for youth that they're social workers or whomever may not be aware of. Not necessarily participating on their teams, but again, the strive for ninety-five, how do we help with absenteeism to support on that preventative? And as kids, they have a dashboard now for absenteeism and truancy that they, and there's like different colors, basically. So they'll, they can know each day via the dashboard if a, if a youth is starting to migrate from the green to maybe a yellow or a orange hue or something. So then it's like, okay, what's going on with that youth? And then maybe we can help it, you know, intercede prevention wise before it gets to a truancy piece. So that's just some early conversations, so-
That's a good point, because the, the point is we're trying to build a relationship to get there. So I don't think the meeting's going to be a lot of things like what you, where you're at to that degree. I see where you're at, but it needs to, to hold a little bit, because this is kind of a development trust relationship type deal. Because I think Janaye, I didn't want the meeting to be overwhelmed with like eighty county people.
Sure.
So Janaye and Carla are going to have to do, understand this thing real good and do a lot of the ties, particularly whatever Jack's doing with truancy, I had to get a grip on it, and the fact is, how do we get in with them and get that connection? So the point you may be talking about, we may be able to bring up another deal, but-
Well, just, just for FYI, I mean, we, we still have some challenges with students that lead and are, are waiting to get back into school. And where there's still some challenges, how those expelled youth, how, how they're away from school for extended periods of time. Both of those things are issues that at some point are going to have to be part of the transition.
No, I hear you, but just know we ain't, we're not going in that meeting saying it. This is, this is trying to fill out the map and find out how do we get to certain places before they get here and in here.
It seemed very, with meeting with Lisa was really like solutions focused and very open to how, you know, the opportunity that we can help support. So I think we will get there, Mark, if mine just take us a little bit.
As it relates-
Never moves fast enough.
As it relates to truancy, will you upstate the R E D coordinator for our capstone team, if you learned anything new or processes, so that that capstone team's aware?
Yeah, probably with Sean too, um, because I'm not sure, you know, again, this was just our initial conversation, so I'm not, I don't want to, again, duplicate efforts in, in muddy waters that are flowing really well with the Jack and those pieces now. And the county attorney, it's, I think, will be even further upstream. But then how do we link, link that together to-
Yeah, and I'm just supporting you all, because this is like the initial kind of layout to get a grip of, to understand it, because, you know, they got new goals coordinator. They got a lot of new stuff, so the question is, how do we, this whole thing we've been talking about upfront about how do we get in and help identify early and everybody play together? This is the, the point to do that, and the opportunity is, is there. Um, so, you know, I, I think if you've got some concerns, feel free to share with everybody. But just know this, this first meeting is not going to be like going in and saying, hey, you need to do this and da, 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 da. You know, it's just a, we're going to feel and go from there. So, um, yeah, just want everybody to be aware of. Any other questions with Janaye or me? All right. So with that, let me, let me give you a little bit of updates. I'm going to need from you all, any concerns or things you may want to share, because I got an email from, so Josh Hennington, Ed Steve Laitner approves the Chair of Judiciary's General Counsel. And Josh sent me an email about a meeting that they had next week, next Tuesday at one P M. That I got invited to, so I, I told him that I'll come. The gist of this meeting, though, is, um, a roundtable, and they're submitting thoughts on current juvenile justice issues. So I'm assuming Laitner has gathered some stuff together to go at some things. I don't know what this is going to be. It's going to be a roundtable, some general discussion. And I'm sure it's going to pick up in a whole nother realm because of the stuff that's happening in Carney and Geneva. And it's going to open the door for a whole lot of other things. So what I need you to do is send me an email, some bullet point things that, you know, in your thought, all with the overall process and what's going on, what your concerns may be. So I can see and look through them and be able to have a conversation with you to really get an in-depth conversa, an in-depth understanding of what they may play out. So if I am asked about it, I can elaborate on it and fit it into this discussion. I don't know how it's going to be. I think this is just a general roundtable for them to get a feel, to pull out some things about where it is and let Laitner kind of get an idea on where it goes. I mean, the only thing that I know offhand to discuss from a previous conversation that, um, the Senator and I had in regards to some adult pre-trials and bail stuff, is that he does have an interest in the whole mental health thing. So whatever in-depth discussions we can have about that to some degree, that will be there. And the only other thing I know to probably have the discussion with him on is the, uh, you know, the issue that we're, we're working on with the Georgetown project is, you know, status of in his own probation. That's the only thing I know pertinent. I know there's some other things that we, we kind of got out there, but if there are anything that we need to, that needs to be brought up for that, in that roundtable, let me know. Because I think they are taking information for this to kind of set up whatever legislative hearing on, um, a resolution on a hearing that might be happening. So I think this is an initial step. So if you got it, send it to me so I can look through it and be able to ask you some deep questions to get, to get a grip on this.
When do you need it, Mark?
I need ASAP, because the thing, the next Tuesday, so I need to get it soaked through and be able to ask you some stuff, look and go from there.
Is it any juvenile justice issue or related only to the idea of a new building?
No, it ain't nothing about a building.
Any juvenile justice issues?
It's nothing about a building. Uh, it says, uh, said Laitner would like to invite you to a roundtable discussion, juvenile justice issues related to interim studies that have been introduced in legislation that may be introduced next session.
It says related to interim studies. Do you know, what are the interim studies?
I don't know. I asked him and I haven't got a response, but-
That would be helpful too, to kind of spur some thoughts. If you get back, can you shoot that?
Yeah, if I get it, but I haven't, I haven't got it yet, but just give me, give me what you got and fit it in until I get that. But, um, um, like I said, it's going to be the tenth, one P M. Somewhere in Lincoln. And they are having interim studies later this fall, so, um-
I'm trying to think what legislative studies were. I know there are some in my brain, so I'll look, because I might have them in the, in that legislative update.
Yeah. So if you look through in that, you know, go with that, we'll go from there. Other than that, so it's nothing new, but just following up. So the last time we got together, I mentioned to you all about that position. There was an article in the paper about the Deputy County Administrator for Juvenile Justice. I think we're close to the position being finalized. It was in the paper there, got introduced at the OYS meeting. There wasn't a JDI meeting, but probably what I might ask Patrick to do is just send it to JDI. Stakeholder is send it to OYS, just so they know, give some feedback. And just for the record, there was some suggestions that had, that came in, I know one that I saw was the fact of, and I saw a response to it, and I agree, so I'm just saying this so it's on record and open, of having this person kind of serve as an ombudsman, and I agree and respect that that person should do that.
Should not do that, right?
No, should not do it, because one, if you have an ombudsman, it needs to be kind of separate from the position. You can't have the person in the position with the authority over being the ombudsman too, that's the number one thing. Plus, there's no way that person would be able to, to have that role in a deal, I mean, that'd take up anybody's time, as it does with the state, so that's kind of the few suggestions that we got from that, so, uh, other than that, that's kind of, you know, update on that.
Chris, can I ask clarification, you said that to send out that, uh...
I'm asking Patrick to send it, just to send it out.
To the steering committee?
So I think we're, I think we're about to finalize it is, but...
And it doesn't say anything specifically about OYS, because that hasn't been resolved yet, as far as I know, but that's something that could be simply as another, you know, duty is assigned, but, yeah.
It's pretty much, I think, like ninety-five percent, but I think just now to get the feedback and go from there, so, um. Other than that, there's really nothing hanging or pending. Like, this is the most important thing right now, is that thing for the tenth, so I can really dig down with you all, go from there. I'll put you on the agenda on the seventeenth, um... And that email is already out, so I guess, I just need to know what we need to do to flow that through.
Okay.
So, um, other than that, there's nothing hanging out that I think I got. Just, I think we're good. All right. Sorry, um, you have a comment?
I'm sorry, Chris, did you ask for comments?
Yep.
Yeah. I'd like to comment very simplistically, and some people will say stupidly, but in very simplistic terms, what I hear going on, and I see in that flow chart, reminds me of George Orwell, nineteen eighty-four. Soya and Green, I'm gonna be with the, everybody's favorite, it would be Robinson and Charlton Heston. Some of the youth programs of the Hitler administration, that to the extent of, your children now belong to us, because you know that, somebody's best practices knows better. Most of those best practices come from foundations, who of course, quoted in a newspaper today, do expect something in return for their contributions. So, let's not walk down that path of not having a citizen government. The citizens are, are sovereign. Now, if we need to do all of this stuff, are we gonna call this new guy we're gonna hire because we can't do it ourselves? Are we gonna call him a commissar? That sounds rather extreme, doesn't it? But if you look at it from a simple citizen's viewpoint back in this town square in seventeen seventy-six, none of this is intended by the founding fathers. And the progressives espouse these same types of programs. Progressives changed the Constitution, and it's time to put a stop to some of this. Let's put the energy that you spend and the wisdom that you do have into the local school system, and don't remove the SROs. Let's don't make the SROs your enemy. The reason I say that is because I attended a meeting recently, but I've also been down to the State House on that bill, and I don't like that either, so please, slow down a little on this. Everybody else knows better and they can run the government better, please.
Thank you. You say for the record, the board makes all decisions, no decisions are determined without the boards' say, the foundation controls the decisions of the board, with that, you're done, thank you.